Hey, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Administration Finance Recreation and Parks Public Safety and Public Works Committee Meeting, November tenth, twenty twenty. The purpose of the committee meeting is that the city departments have passed line information to the city council and discuss initiatives listed on the public agenda. My ordinance and committee consists of the mayor, members of the city council, and the city administrator. The ordinance mandates the city administrator as chair of the meeting. This is a public meeting, but not a public hearing, therefore, all the meetings open to the public. We do not take public comments or questions during the committee meetings. All the comments and questions are received at the regular city council meetings held at seven P M. in the city council chambers or virtually on the second and fourth Monday of each one. The first item on today's agenda is the approval of the minutes for the Public Safety and Public Works Committee meeting from October thirteenth, twenty twenty. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilmember Judy. Is there a second?
Second.
And my councilmember Tizer. Any questions or comments? All in favor, please raise your hands. It is unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to the Public Safety and Public Works Committee Agenda. Public Safety Police, item number two, consideration of a resolution to accept the two hundred, uh, the twenty twenty aftermath K nine grant in the amount of five hundred dollars. Chief Conroy.
All right, can you hear me, sir?
I got you.
Okay, so this is the, um, the acceptance of the aftermath grant. It is in the amount of five hundred dollars, um, from the company aftermath, and this is to be used to, uh, enhance our K nine unit, uh, to purchase supplies and equipment.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilmember Blairmore. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Hall. Any questions or comments? All in favor, please raise your hands. And it is unanimous. Thank you. Item number three, consideration of a resolution to accept the federal fiscal year twenty twenty bulletproof vest partnership grant awarded the amount of ten thousand nine hundred fourteen dollars. Chief Conroy.
Okay, and this is acceptance of a grant from the, uh, Department of Justice, U S Bureau of Justice Assistance, um, in the amount of ten thousand nine fourteen to partially fund the purchase of ballistic vests. Uh, this is a hundred percent match grant, which would require a match grant from, uh, police funds of ten thousand nine hundred and fourteen dollars.
Any questions from the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilmember Blairmore. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Spada. Any questions or comments? All in favor, please raise your hands. And it is unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to item number four, consideration of a resolution to increase fees on services performed by the police record department. Chief Conroy.
Okay, this item is not as easy as the prior two, but, uh, this does involve an increase in some of the fees for police permitting. Uh, these fees have not been increased since two thousand one, so it's been nineteen years. Um, I believe all of you in front of you have the, uh, the fee schedule. There are six items where the fees are changing, and I'll go over each one of those. Uh, the recommend for, uh, alcohol permits, uh, the recommended increase is from twenty five dollars to thirty dollars. That also brings a change. The current permit is for two years. Um, the proposed permit would be for one year. The next increase would be the criminal background check fee. It's currently fifteen dollars, and we're proposing to go to twenty dollars. The rolling of fingerprints, uh, we're proposing an increase from ten dollars to twenty dollars. The solicitor permit, we're proposing an increase from twenty five dollars to fifty dollars. That one is for a six-month permit. The time length does not change. And then the new fee, which would be the Georgia carry permit, um, this, uh, we currently have no fee because we do not offer the service, and this fee is set by the state at five dollars. And those are the changes also on your sheets. Have some of our neighboring jurisdictions. It is very much in line with those other jurisdictions.
But chief, if we added that five dollar fee for the carry permit, that means we will start that service?
Correct. We, uh, we're, we need this approval, but we're in the process, as you recall, that, uh, we received the JAG grant to purchase the, um, automatic fingerprint machine, the live scan fingerprint machine. Um, we have ordered it. It should be delivered here. We hope to have everything up and running prior to Christmas. We've already worked out the procedures with the probate court in Fulton County, and they're prepared to begin as soon as we have the machine up and running.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Councilmember Blairmore.
Yeah, I was gonna say, uh, for that, for the permitting, for that carry permit, it's something where Roswell residents needed to go into Atlanta. And then what ended up happening during COVID, the Alpharetta residents and Sandy Spring residents had the opportunity to go to their own municipalities, whereas in Roswell, I was getting a lot of calls from different residents that were needing to go down to, uh, to, uh, Atlanta for that. And, and given, seeing this chart of really how everything's aligned with, with other cities, and in fact, a, a good amount cheaper for, for, for some of them, and the fact that we haven't updated since two thousand one, this is something I do support, and I motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilmember Blairmore. Is there a second? Councilmember Spada.
Yeah, I would second, but I have a question first. Uh, how often do we have, eh, any procedures in the process? How often we need to review this? So we don't let it go nineteen years. Uh, is anything chief that we need to look into in terms of policy to update regularly those fees, or at least look at them?
Um, yeah, we, we currently don't have a policy as to how often we look at them, but, um, good practices is they should be reviewed annually. So we will include that in our annual review, just to make sure there's been no significant changes.
Great, thank, yeah, because living this nineteen years is kind of like long time, so, okay, I second that.
Great, thank you.
Motion on the floor is seconded. Any questions or comments from the council? All in favor, please raise your hands. And it is Councilmember Hall, you, okay, thank you, and unanimous. Moving on to item number five, discussion regarding license plate readers. Chief Conroy.
Okay, so, um, I, I had a request to provide a, uh, a brief overview of license plate readers. I think it's in conjunction with, uh, some of your discussions about right-of-way. So let me give a brief overview of license plate readers, and then we'll open it up for questions, because I think that'll be the easiest way. But, uh, automated license plate readers, uh, these are really high-speed cameras which capture computer-readable images of license plates, and they record the data electronically. Uh, they record vehicles, locations, date and time. Um, these can either be mobile or stationary. We do have some mobile ones on some of our patrol cars, but they're, uh, a majority of the ones are stationary, and I think the ones for the right-of-way that were under discussion would be stationary. Um, license plate readers are relatively new. Uh, they were developed in the United Kingdom for dealing with IRA, the, uh, the terrorist organization, and they began use in the United States in the early two thousands, right after nine eleven, uh, they gained popularity, popularity to combat terrorism. Uh, license plate readers, they're in use by both private sector and public sector, which includes law enforcement. Uh, some of the private sector uses, which we may not be familiar with, are finance companies for vehicle repossessions, insurance companies, investigative journalists, private investigators, private security companies. A lot of shopping malls have used them. The parking management is one of the big uses, uh, private parking management. And then in the public sector, you see them used in toll booths, toll lanes, airport parking. Uh, they're used heavily for commercial vehicle regulation and municipal parking. And law enforcement uses them primarily for real-time investigations and historical investigations. Um, they're used heavily at the border crossings, and of course, you're familiar, uh, with the school speed zones, which we have at the Vicry Mill Elementary, and we're currently installing the one at Holcomb Bridge Middle. Uh, they utilize that license plate technology for speed enforcement at those locations. Um, some of the uses that we use in foreign police is, uh, for the police systems, we're able to upload hot lists, which contain lists of stolen cars, missing persons, endangered persons, Amber Alerts, or any other wanted persons. Uh, there's many success stories, um, that I can give you, the, the, publish them daily, but, uh, here in Roswell, I, I do know since my time here, we've had two homicides that were solved primarily with, with the data from, uh, license plate readers, and they were extremely helpful. Um, one thing to know about these disparate, when I mentioned the private sector and public sector, um, the private sector does not have access to any law enforcement data, uh, from our hot list or from the data that we upload, any of our images, the private sector cannot access those. But law enforcement, however, does have access to the private, uh, sector data that is uploaded into their system. You get questions about Big Brother, and this is one of those pieces, as we talk about in Big Data. Um, it's just one of the pieces of the puzzle of license plate reader data, cell phone data, social media, uh, photography data, uh, all the video surveillance data, which is both public and private, uh, the Ring cameras, I think you're familiar with. But some of the, the data that's out there that you may not be aware of are the Fitbits that we wear on our wrist, of your Alexa, your Amazon Echo, or your Google Assistants at home, and even your Apple Watches are collecting data at, at all times. Um, as technology has improved over the years and become much less expensive, license plate readers are becoming more prevalent, including by the private sector, um, which I mentioned before, businesses, malls, banks, hotels, airports, HOAs, and private citizens are, are now installing these. Um, some states have laws restricting the use of the license plate reader data by law enforcement and record retention, but none of them have addressed the private entity, uh, collection of data. And some of those, uh, Flock, Ring, Nest, GoPro, Wyze Cam Arlos, and Trail Cameras, and I wanted to mention Trail Cameras. Um, I had some entering autos in my neighborhood, and, uh, they tried to break into my car a few times since COVID started. So I bought a trail camera online. I just searched for license plate reader, and a trail camera popped up that is capable of recording license plates that drive past your house. Uh, and I got that for forty-nine dollars. So these are very prevalent out there. And as you're aware, as most of our HOAs and some of our businesses are investing in these license plate readers primarily, um, we're dealing a lot with Flock, uh, one of the cameras. Um, it's becoming, uh, more mainstream, and lots of questions about policy come up, and that's exactly why we're here, is to discuss some of the policies that the city might need to enact to regulate this industry. That's my quick overview, and I know you'll have a lot of questions, so I'll open that up for any questions.
Floor is open. Anybody have any questions? No questions, chief. I appreciate your time.
Outstanding. Well, thank you so much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, chief.
Okay, we're gonna take a, uh, a thirty-second, one-minute break while we flip agendas, so just hang tight. Okay, we are back on for the Administration Finance Recreation and Parks Committee Meeting, agenda. Okay, we'll go to the approval of minutes. Item number one, approval of minutes for the Administration Finance Recreation Parks Committee Meeting for October thirteenth, twenty twenty. Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilmember Tizer. Second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Willsey. Any questions or comments? All in favor, please raise your hands. It is unanimous. Thank you. Under Administration, consideration and cancel, Caroling on Canton, Sunday, December sixth, requesting to add a drive-in movie night to be held at City Hall. Which one?
Thank you. Um, as you well know, Caroling on Canton is held on the first Sunday in December, and last year we had over twenty singing groups and five hundred people attend, and it culminates in the heart of Roswell Park with bonfires, hot chocolate, um, some more making. So this year, due to COVID, um, the ongoing COVID pandemic, and after reviewing the current executive orders and the CDC recommending, um, gathering of large groups, and additionally, the fact that a lot of these, um, singing groups aren't meeting in conventional ways anymore, the church groups and the Girl Scouts, um, we are recommending canceling Caroling on Canton for twenty twenty. Um, I did want to mention that we're planning to add in a holiday drive-in movie, which we're planning to have on December nineteenth in the City Hall parking lot. Um, we are currently working with a company that will, um, get us the movie licensing for the movie Elf. Um, and, uh, we can probably put in about a hundred cars, um, in the parking lot. So, that's all. Does any questions?
Floor is open. What's the pleasure of the council? Councilmember Hall.
Motion to approve.
So are we motioning, do you, Chris, do you need approval for the movie, or are you just?
No, just the approval for the, um, cancellation of Caroling on Canton.
Got you.
Good.
Motion approved by Councilmember Halls, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Tizer. Any questions or comments? All in favor, please raise your hands. It is unanimous. Thank you. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number three, consideration of twenty twenty CDBG, CV round one proposals and scores. Mr. Alfred.
You guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. All right, uh, let me share my screen here. So, uh, we collected the, uh, input for for the CDBG, uh, CV round one, uh, applications. I understand we had some issues with, uh, ZIM grants, so some people tried to go in and score, and it was very sluggish and lethargic. I'm not sure, uh, what to make of that. It was just a technical difficulty. I went in and the following day and saw the same thing, so I apologize for that. Um, what we did have was, all the mayor and councils, I've received responses back from mayor and council, and, um, it kind of buried. We didn't get a whole lot of scoring. I think I had one council member, two council members score, um, the applications, but basically I was able to compile that and pull together, um, three different options that we had, um, for funding these twenty twenty CDBG round one applications. Uh, the first option, uh, was the top-down, uh, traditional way we would score this, we basically, or, or allocate funds, we'd take the, the top-scoring application and fully fund it all the way down until the last application got partial funding. Um, option two, which several people suggested, uh, which was to fund all of the applications that were eligible, uh, at a proportionate share, which came out to be about seventy-four percent, which is what you see here. And then councilmembers Hall and Zapata submitted it, a third option, um, which, as I could tell, is just changed up the amount that was, uh, going from Homestretch to Norfolk Community Charity, so split that up. Uh, so that's what we're here to, uh, discuss and hopefully get a motion to approve one of these, uh, to the next mayor and council meeting.
Councilmember Blairmore. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Alfred, I appreciate you putting this together. It's a very helpful Excel. I was one of those council members that tried going in there and had trouble. And if you remember, I emailed kind of a question. I thought overall it seemed things, you know, somewhat looked good. A question I had was, I know one of the items, and I believe it was for the adaptive friendship camp, but tell me if I, but it might have been something different. Uh, it, it involved kind of a higher-quality filter to kind of create a safe, safer breathing environment. And which of these three options, because I, if, if I'm correct, if it is that one, then, then does that mean that option three is the only one that's, that's guaranteed to have that safer air for the, for the kids in there?
Um, all of these fund that. The adaptive friendship camp pay fifteen thousand dollar line item for, um, a air filtration system, so this should all cover that fifteen thousand dollar filtration system.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
This, is this one down here?
Councilmember Hall.
Uh, yes, um, I would just like to say I like option three, but, uh, uh, and, and just some of the logic behind it was, I, I believe Homestretch got a fair amount of funding from, uh, from Fulton County and, and other sources, so that was the reason that, um, the methodology for reducing that request and spreading it amongst the others. And, and that's what my reasoning was behind that. Just wanted to share that.
Councilmember Judy.
Yeah, um, I, I, I think this was a good exercise, um, and I, I think because this is different than what we've done in the past with CBDG, CDBG funding, um, and this is more of a one-off, uh, help as many people as we can with the money that came in. I, uh, chose option number two, and, um, that of their ask, uh, that came through and, uh, made it very simple and fair, uh, with the money that we received. So, um, option two is my choice, uh, for that reason.
Mayor.
Uh, I support the staff request, which is the top-down, but then also I can live with the seventy-four percent. And then I would also like to add that we can look into this with the, um, CARES Act reimbursement fund from Fulton County as far as, uh, funding things that we can't fund in this, um, CDBG program.
Councilmember Tizer.
Thank you, Gary. Um, so the first three people to weigh in, each chose a different option. Um, so, um, I feel, I feel like, like, like I need to weigh in here for a moment. Um, I, I looked at both option one and option two, submitted each of them. Uh, when I looked at option one, though, normally when staff were to do this, they'd be approving a, get a specific program, uh, and you either have to fund the whole program or part of the program. In these cases, it's a, a lot of reimbursement going on, and so, um, I kind of moved away from there and, and, and zeroed in on option two uh, as, as a way to spread the money around as best we could in the most fair way, uh, that we could. I think I could explain to any of those groups, uh, why they, why they got either more or less than, or, of, all of them, I think, got less uh, than what they asked for. I could simply say, we allocated the money based on percentage. So I think that's where I end up on this. Thank you.
Councilmember Blairmore.
Uh, thank you. So my, uh, my, my thing is, in, in hearing the logic around the fact that, that, um, one of, one of these great, great charities got, uh, funding from Fulton County and others didn't, I think that's, I think that's, that's relevant for me, wanting to make sure that we are really spreading that, that support and really helping out the community. Also, uh, something I, I noticed, there's the job training classroom with Norfolk Fulton Community Charities, which is a great, great, uh, initiative. And then also there's the tutoring slash job couch, coaching for the Housing Authority. And so I, I, it's definitely important for me to see both of those get funded. Keeping in mind, too, though, the Housing Authority, those are, it's my understanding- Keeping in mind, too, the Housing Authority, those are, it's my understanding, those are all Roswell residents and really Roswell's lowest-income residents. And so I feel there's a lot of benefit in ensuring that we're really assisting them. And for a reason, actually, that I learned from Councilman Tyzer. He had brought up a good point when we were discussing some CARES Act stuff, probably a month or two back, in wanting to see where we invest this money, in seeing where, in a way, gets multiplied. And the way that I personally interpreted that was in the sense that there's, whether you're doing childcare, or you're doing job training, et cetera, those are ways that it's kind of multiplying because you're helping these people bring in income, which is great. So again, I obviously wish, you know, we had enough money to really just triple everything and do option one, two, and three, and then just give them more than they all requested. But knowing that's not the case, I think I do lean towards three. And again, going back to just the other one, I do want to make sure, whichever way we're looking at it, too, the Adaptive Friendship Camp, since it doesn't clarify right here what it goes to. I know Mr. Alfred mentioned that in the record, that any of these three would be going towards making sure there's clean air for the people at the camp to breathe. I just want to make sure that's clarified as well. And clearly, based on the allocation with option three, that's obviously funded as well.
Charles, can you unshare your screen, please? I can't see the whole panel.
Alright, will do.
Councilmember Willsey?
Yes, thank you. Can you reshare your screen, Charles? Thank you. Now, thank you for going through this exercise and allowing us to get through. I actually did make it through most of the ZIM grants funding, except for one, and read through all of them very carefully, and I think they're all very worthwhile projects. I would also support option number two. I think that it, like I said, they're all very worthwhile projects that I think will have long-term benefit and keep, you know, and continued returns to the city. So I would support option two. If we wanted to do a variation of option number two, one thing that I could see possibly doing is that those that scored 40 and above might receive a higher, slightly higher percentage with those below 40 receiving a slightly smaller amount. What that split might be, you know, I would be, I'm not sure how it would work out, but if there needed to be some line, deciding line, I think that might be a fair way to look at it. Otherwise, I would support option number two if we're choosing between these three options.
Councilmember Tyzer?
Thank you, Gary. I have a question for Mayor Henry. I thought that I had heard somewhere that Norfolk and Community Charities also receive money from Fulton County Cares directly. And so I just want to make sure that as people make choices on that particular item, on that particular criteria, that we have all the information out there. So that's my question for Mayor Henry.
And I will respond to that. Norfolk and Community Charities received $600,000 from Fulton County CARES Act money.
Thank you.
Councilmember Palermo?
Thank you for that helpful question, Councilman Tyzer, and that helpful answer, Mayor Henry. And that's something that helps me drive from option two more to option three as well, for that reason. And what I'd actually like to discuss again is, I know this is what got us here, was I think process is really important. And this is, these are such, you know, great initiatives, you know, literally every single one that comes in, I think it's ones where we'd all be proud to support. And an issue I have is, we had an old process that was always 100% unanimous. It was a process that always found consensus. And now, as we're seeing with this new process, we're seeing really a split. And I think one of the challenges that we have, and I think something that all seven of us could do more of, is really working to find consensus. And I actually, I think there's two ways to really find consensus. One way is if for the future, we just actually used the process that we had before that was always having consensus and not creating such division and divisiveness. Right here, I think all seven people are being completely respectful and working well together. But again, I hate to see just such a split. What I'd love to discuss is, how do we maybe even create some variations between those top two? So it looks like there's obviously a lot of support for option three. I believe if I was hearing correctly, there's also a lot of support for option two. And what I'd love to look at is, how can we perhaps create some variation? So instead of having a, you know, just a typical split vote, we just look to work together right here in a public meeting and make some variations, and then hopefully get to a 7-0 vote? And I think one way to help us get there is, as Councilman Tyzer pointed out, and Mayor Henry pointed out, that Norfolk and Community Charities did get a large amount from Fulton County. And again, we do see some tutoring and job support for the, really, the Roswell residents that are in our low-income Roswell Housing Authority, and finding opportunity to help them, and just looking for other ways where nobody gets the, you know, exact 100% the way they were looking for. But let's just find a way to build some consensus.
May not be able to see. I'll stop sharing my screen. Hold on.
Mayor Henry?
I'd also like to point out that Fulton County is doing a job training program for all Fulton County residents. Part of our agreement that the mayor's made with the city, or with Fulton County, is that Fulton County was going to do a job training program in order to retrain people in this economic climate and COVID climate. And that is also open to all City of Roswell residents. So I did want to point that out as well. There are those opportunities.
Councilwoman Spata?
Thank you. So, yeah, they're all great organizations, they're all great causes. So, but we need to take a decision. Obviously, number three is my first choice. I could also support number two with certain variation, given the information, provided that some of these organizations either receive receive a lot or some money directly from Fulton County. Some others didn't or receive no much money directly from Fulton County. So, and I will, you know, support Councilmember Palermo initiate a idea to find, you know, some consensus on the, between the two, option two and three, taking in consideration that some of them receive quite a bit directly from Fulton County versus others, nothing or very little. So, and I said that, you know, I believe that, you know, Roswell Housing Authority didn't ask for much, and they really need this money. They totally need it on this new administration. So, I think if we can find a consensus between two and three, a mix of those two, I think that will be the win-win, and I will support this exercise.
Councilmember Willsey?
Yes, thank you. Do you remember correctly that Roswell Housing Authority was also receiving some additional grant money? Charles, do you recall? I seem to remember that there was, they had applied for, or they did have some additional funding?
No, I'm not 100% sure. I imagine they've gotten some kind of assistance from the feds, but I'm not sure. I think Norfolk and Community Charities did get some, and one of them, Homestretch, but I'm not sure about the Housing Authority.
Right. Okay, yeah, that's what I thought about Roswell Housing Authority. And I was also just curious if you knew what the process was for Norfolk and, or for Fulton County allocating funds earlier? Was it on an application basis? But, you know, or how did they allocate those funds initially?
I think they had some CBBG funds as well, and they did that through an application. But I also think they got funds that they just distributed based on a proportionate amount to the different municipalities that care for them.
Right, okay. Well, thank you. I just wanted to clear those things up. But I did, just if you look again, just wanted to suggest once again, the possible compromise. And that would be to award those that scored 40 and above at a higher percentage rate than those that were below 40. And I think that we'll get, you know, we'll get closer to blending option two and option three and distributing the funds in a way that I think, I think we might get closer to consensus if we look at something like that.
Any other questions from the council? Councilmember Hall?
Just a quick question. So the scoring, everybody was able to score? Or how did the scoring work?
Only received scores back from yourself and Councilmember Willsey.
Could you put the numbers back up on the screen, please?
Sorry about that.
Mayor Henry?
I'm confused. I filled out the scoring, and I'm not sure why I'm not included in that. And I was given examples of other councilmembers that had filled out the scoring, and I'm not sure why they weren't included in that. So if you could help me with that, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. Hold on one second. Am I sharing or we're not sharing? I'm sharing. I probably just overlooked that. I pulled together the spreadsheets. I thought when I looked at your spreadsheet, it went, the scoring was consistent with staff scoring. Was that not correct? I got your allocations, but I didn't see that the scores were different than what his staff had scored. So, I didn't want to put the scores up here if it was just Councilmember Willsey. Councilmember Hall just scored everybody 50 that she was going to fund in her plan, so that made sense. But I didn't want to just put Councilmember Willsey. I apologize if you had unique scores there.
Well, I'm confused. I'm sorry. We all weighed in on this subject. So is there a reason why Councilmember Hall and Councilmember Willsey were the only ones that were considered in the responses? I'm confused.
When I'm saying score, I mean the score, like go through and use the scoring criteria to come up with a numerical score. Everybody gave me an Excel spreadsheet, or at least sent me an email about a strategy for funding the allocations. I believe you included one for top-down. Councilmember Tyzer also was supportive of top-down. Councilmember Judy as well. And then I had several people mention the 74%. And then the reason this says Hall and Zapata is because they both gave me a third option, which I didn't have a lot of context for. So I just put their names there because they matched up as a third option. But you're-
Could you explain the third option to me a little bit better, please?
I'd have to refer to Councilmember Hall and Zapata, because I didn't get any commentary on it. It was just their school, their allocations matched up.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes, I could comment. We tried, basically, we talked about it, and we looked at funding everybody at 100% that perhaps received the smallest amount of support to date, based on what we knew. And we tried to fund everybody something. And that's why the two people that didn't get everything they asked for Norfolk and Community Charities and Homestretch is because we knew that they had gotten a fair amount of other funding. So, and it sort of is consistent with some of the score stuff.
And how is option three different than option two? Because in option two, 74%, which funds everyone to a certain degree?
Do you want to?
Well, option three funds 100% of five, of one, two, three, four, four out of the six.
Okay.
Any further questions or comments from the council? Charles, what are you looking for?
Looking for a consensus to council approval, so we could get this application submitted on.
Councilmember Palermo?
Again, my request is, I'd love to see this be a unanimous vote. So I guess, we know clearly there's support for, there's some support for option three. I believe there's support for option two, if I've been hearing correctly. And I'd love to hear any proposals from anyone on how we get, how we kind of merge two and three and just find some compromise between those two. If I was hearing that correctly, maybe there's more support for option one.
Councilmember Hall?
I would support what Councilmember Willsey said, that look at option two, and the ones that got 40 and above, perhaps scoot up a percentage of those funds in the bottom two, to the, to the top folks.
Councilmember Spata?
Thank you. So, yeah, I can support option two if we pump up the Roswell Housing Authority to fund 100% the $75,000 that they requested. And this, you know, I can support two if we can get the Housing Authority to 100% of the request.
Councilmember Tyzer?
So I think what that just created was option one, where we fully funded everyone from the highest score down, which is the way staff's always done these. And then, when we run out of money, right, the Adaptive Friendship Camp gets 17, 752. So basically, I think what you just created there was option one.
Councilmember Palermo?
No, I don't think that's the case. It looked like that at first to me as well. But I don't think that's the case, because if you compare option one and option two, you have more money in option two going to the Adaptive Friendship Camp. It's because there's $55,500 on the lowest scoring item. And that's where, I know it's a smaller amount, but for me, I lean towards option two. And then if we get the Roswell Housing Authority to 100%, and then we get the senior programming to 100%, which was the highest scoring item, there's still money left over, a good amount of money left over from the Norfolk and Community Charities. And I think just by having, from the lowest scoring item, moving that small amount to get RHA 200% in senior center, I mean, to me, that seems like a good compromise.
Councilmember Hall?
So just to recap what Councilmember Palermo said, is pull $25,000 out of the bottom one and move 20 of it roughly to the housing authority, move 20,000 to the Housing Authority, and five of it to the number-one item, Wreckin' Parks.
Councilmember Tyzer?
That's a great compromise, but that's option three.
It is?
Uh-huh.
So I guess Councilmember Willsey, I was trying to emulate Councilmember Willsey's thought process of just making sure there's more points going to those higher ones, so.
Yeah, I was just trying to figure out what the math might be if we did, you know, 80% to those 40 and above, and 75% to those below. I'm not sure exactly what the percentages would work out, but I think we would get pretty close to having some fair allocations based on, based on the proposals themselves and how they were evaluated by the group, if we did something like that. Again, I think it's just trying to figure out what that top percentage is and how that might distribute fairly across the top four.
Councilwoman Judy?
So, I think here's the problem with this. The scores there, and correct me if I'm wrong, Charles, are only based upon Councilmember Hall and Councilmember Willsey's scores, because they were the only scores input. Is that correct?
No, that's still staff scores. Because that's what the top-down was based on. I didn't include Councilmember Willsey's score, because she was the only one that had unique scores. So I didn't just want to put a scoring up there. I apologize, Councilmember Willsey. I just didn't know how to fit it into a sheet and just put, you know, Councilmember Willsey's score, and then- Councilmember Willsey's score and then Councilmember Hall submitted her scores for the ones that she chose to fund, which were fifty. So I didn't know how to incorporate that into the chart really.
Okay. So, so I answered my question. So I think the only way if we're going to, uh, go about trying to make a certain entity whole in their request, if that's RHA. Uh, and so the reason, this is the reason I supported option number two is we're going to have to take money away from other causes there um, based upon either the score or based upon, um, them getting funding from Fulton County. Um, so we have to figure that out and is that enough money then to make whatever we want to make whole, whole? So, you know, if we say the, um, if we say Homestretch and North Fulton Community Charities, uh, got funding from, uh, Fulton County and we're going to do it that way, then you've got to take away a percentage of that to make the other ones whole. Or we need to take a percentage away from everybody to make whatever we want whole. So I think that's the only way to go about it here unless we're just going to go with option two or option three.
Councilor Palermo.
What about, what about this as I, as I look at it? So it seemed like there was a lot of support for, for option two and then just the concerns really around the Roswell housing, uh, the, the housing authority. So if you look at two, and actually I feel we might be able to do this by even having a blend of one and two. And so if, if we look at option one and we remove twenty-six thousand from the Homestretch, that then gets us to the seventy-four thousand that is in option two. And then that twenty-six thousand then is allocated towards the, you know, adaptive friendship camp and/or, you know, uh, North Fulton Community Charities. It just, does that, does that kind of get us closer?
Councilor Jerry.
I don't think that would be fair just to remove it from Homestretch. Uh, you'd have to remove it from North Fulton Community Charities as well if you're taking stuff for people that receives from Fulton County.
Well, no. So I, I guess I'm, you're, I'm looking at option one. So option one currently has zero for North Fulton Community Charities. And so I was suggesting if we remove twenty-six thousand from Homestretch, that now evens out with option two. And the question is where do you want to put that twenty-six thousand?
I guess we'll just go with option two. It's plain, simple, straightforward, seventy-four percent. We can always fund, uh, the remainder with, um, our CARES Act, uh, pot of money. I would just go with seventy-four percent and everybody's going to be happy. I, I don't understand why we're moving things around, but, but that's just me.
I would support that.
Councilor Zapata.
Thank you. So the, you know, here is how much relevant you want to give to those organizations who receive a quite big amount directly from Fulton County. I think for me, it's down to that. Um, you know, is it fair to give more to the one who received less or nothing directly from Fulton County? Or is fair to give it more a hundred percent to the one who already received a lot from Fulton County directly? So I guess for me, my approach comes down to this, the one who didn't receive anything or know much, then I would like to help the most, this Roswell organization. And the one that already received directly from Fulton County, uh, a big amount or a considerable amount, then receive less, still give them some, but less. So that, that will, that is my logic and approach. Um, so, uh, I don't know if, uh, I have support on this approach or, uh, we still want to just keep it simple and seventy-four across the board and doesn't matter if they receive tons of money directly from Fulton County versus those local old organizations who didn't receive or receive very little money from Fulton County.
Mayor Henry.
Um, what I would like to say, and you know, I, I'm flexible on this. I, I, I don't have a dog in this hunt. Um, however, what I would like to say is what we also need to look at is the stretch of these various, um, charities. And I would be willing to bet you, I don't know. I, I, I don't have any facts or figures and I'm sure someone will send them to me tomorrow. But North Fulton Community Charities has a very, very, very broad reach. Um, I would consider them to probably be the broadest reach in this list here. So I, I don't think you could just look at them receiving six hundred thousand dollars from Fulton County as the, um, common denominator. However, I, you know, I'm all about the little guy too. So, you know, if we want to just tell community, Fulton County Community Charities, you're getting Fulton County money, um, we're going to allot CDBG to these other charities, the little guys. I'm all about that too. So, but I think that we need to go into it with an open mind. And North Fulton Charities has a much broader reach than all of these other, um, somebody's going to correct me, I know, but in, in my opinion, it's a broader reach than these other, um, charities that are up for, um, funding. So.
Councilmember Tyser.
I'd like to make a proposal that I think will make everyone happy. Let's fully fund all the requests and let's do it this way. Let's ask, let's have Charles file with HUD because he has to file something, option two. And let's make a commitment tonight that when we redo our budget amendment in a couple of weeks, that we will put a hundred and three thousand dollars towards this to fully fund everybody from seventy-four percent to one hundred percent. I think that's a really exciting compromise that makes all of the charities happy, fully funds everybody. And, um, all the, the citizens, residents, people who need this kind of help get taken care of.
That works for me.
I.
So the, so the issue, the issue I have, obviously, as I mentioned, I, I wish we had the money to fully fund everything. And the, the amount you're looking to increase is over a hundred thousand dollars. That's an amount that was turned down by half of this council to actually, uh, really increase the, uh, salaries of our first responders. Those, uh, those having pay issues. So obviously I really want to have our tax dollars go towards all these great charities. I also want to have our tax dollars all go towards our first responders that are being underpaid, even when they take on more responsibility. And I, I, and again, I think it's, it's, it's not giving the full picture to make commitments when we don't see all of our different choices. So I feel we really do need to come up with what is the balance we have, we want to use tonight for this funding. And then we can always during every single budget, we, we can always go through, let's, let's look at giving some money to, uh, to charities and supporting different programs, but that needs to be done holistically and not just done, you know, without seeing every possible need.
Charles.
Yeah, I didn't want to, if you guys are okay with fully funding these projects, I didn't want to muddy the waters. Uh, um, uh, and I didn't really want to mix the funds, but we, as I told you, uh, Councilmember meeting again, uh, a couple of months ago, we have another four hundred and something thousand dollars of COVID funds. So my suggestion to keep it from, from blending those two rounds of thump, funds, which could get very confusing, would be the option one here and to partially fund, uh, the Wreckin Parks Adaptive Friendship Camp. This amount right here would get them the, uh, would cover the, uh, the filtration system. And since this is in the spring, in the spring and summer, uh, we would be able to go back with whatever process you guys decide going forward for that extra four hundred and something thousand dollars and include funding them and potentially North Fulton Community Charities uh, with the additional funds and whoever or whatever else you guys want to, to throw out there. But that would keep us from mixing the funds, um, and we wouldn't have to dip into any general fund or any kind of things like that.
Councilor Zapata.
Thank you. So a couple of questions for Charles. Number one, you know, on the second round, all these organizations will be able and to qualify for the second round that you were mentioning now, they will all qualify for this. Question number one. Question number two, I still don't understand why the only names there is Councilmember Hall and myself in there. No, everybody, you didn't include everybody, respond with names and last names. So I want to understand what was your logic behind that. So I have those two questions for Charles.
Okay, uh, the first one, yes, they would all be, uh, eligible for the round three, uh, funding from the CARES Act, the CDBG, CB. Um, the second question, I was trying to collect, several people sent me multiple op, options. So some people were like, hey, I prefer the top down model, but here's option B. And other people were, here's option C. So I couldn't go through and, and break down everybody by name. So several people wanted the top down model, uh, and I can't remember off the top of my head, but they suggested that, but they didn't tell me whether that was their priority or, or what. It was just an option. And then I had other people that referenced the seventy-four percent option. So I included that because I figured there's enough people that wanted that. And then I got two different, um, you and Councilmember Hall's spreadsheets were the only unique, um, spreadsheets or recommendations. I didn't have any commentary for why, so I couldn't really, I didn't know what to put here as far as seventy-four percent or top down. So all I did, since they matched, was put your names underneath to show that, to make sure you guys were reflected. I didn't want to leave it out, but I didn't know how else to, you know, represent it on a, on a spreadsheet. So it was unique from the other two that I had gotten.
So then my, my follow-up question there, who supports option number two? Can you put a name there on option number one? Since you have included some names, put all the names. So I was, you know, that is me, you know, just, I do all or nothing. So doesn't make much sense for me. Doesn't have much logic, but, uh, that is me.
Well, Councilmember Tyser, uh, Councilmember Willsey, um, Councilmember Judy, there's probably others that were seventy-four percent, the mayor, um, Councilmember Tyser as well. Uh, did the, supported the top down. Councilmember Judy was supportive of that. It was not, but again, it wasn't like this is my priority. So I could put their names in there for sure because they were open to a second alternative. So what I was just putting on the spreadsheet is what was suggested. So you guys would all know what was suggested.
Councilor Jerry. Councilor Jerry, go ahead.
Thank you, Charles. No need to explain yourself. Um, I, I appreciate the work done on this. Um, I, uh, I completely understand what's going on here and I, you know, I am open to the option that Councilmember Tyser said, and I'm also open to, um, the, uh, option you brought up about funding the, uh, Wreckin Parks fully and North Fulton Community Charities in the spring. And I will put my name and promise to both of those. So, um, I think, uh, I would like to move forward on this, uh, if we can, because, uh, we, uh, beat the horse yet again.
I think I might have, I think I might have found, I think I might actually agree, um, with one of the two options. I just want to make sure I'm clear.
Councilor Palermo.
Yep. So, Councilman Judy, so the, the rec, if I heard correctly, one of the two options you stated that, that Mr. Alfred brought up was, uh, the potential of, of having funding to, to provide more funding for North Fulton Community Charities in the spring. And then so if, I guess, and then also fully funding the, the Wreckin Parks. So with that, is there the op, uh, would you be supportive of? Actually, it looks like it doesn't, so with option one, I guess, I guess the, the challenge to do that is, so option one, if I'm, if I'm understanding you correctly, your suggestion, option one, you mentioned that, that hopefully there'd be the option this spring to, uh, to have funding for North Fulton Community Charities. The one challenge with option one is that there is not, uh, the Wreckin Parks are not fully funded. So then I guess the discussion ends up being where can we, where can we find that money on, in option one to move to, uh, to the Wreckin Parks Adaptive Friendship Camp? And, and I, I guess knowing that there was support and I believe I, if I understood correctly, you at one point supported option two. Is it, is there the ability to pull the twenty-six, twenty-six thousand from the Homestretch, which gets us to the Homestretch number of option two? And then just increases that to the Wreckin Pa, Parks as you, uh, as you were saying, you wanted to see them fully funded.
Councilor Willsey.
Yes, I just, um, for the sake of simplicity, I would suggest moving forward with, uh, the option that Councilmember Tyser and Mayor Henry supported, and that is to fund option number two right now at seventy-four percent and commit to, um, the additional a hundred and two thousand dollar funding. I think that way all these organizations get our assurance and our support for their programs and we are making a positive step, um, forward towards helping our community and making these, uh, these funds work for the community. So I, if, if, um, if I may, I'd like to go ahead and make that motion right now.
Thank you.
Charles, does this kind of, does this have to go into, uh, the council meeting or are you just looking for consensus?
I, I need a resolutions to back up our, our submission of our, our, um, substantial amendment.
Okay. So we're just looking for a motion to move this forward?
Please take them.
Is that what we're looking for?
Yes.
Charles? Okay. So Councilor Willsey, did you want to make a motion?
Yes, that's my motion. And I believe I have a second for Councilmembers Zapata.
Okay. You repeat your motion, please.
Uh, motion to move forward with option number two and, uh, to commit the additional hundred and two thousand dollars from, um, the additional, um, funding that's coming our way.
Thank you. Motion forward. Councilmember Zapata, you want a second?
Yes, second.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments from the council?
Yeah, I'm, I'm confused. Yeah, I'm, I'm confused. The, uh, the funding that's, that, with the additional funding that's coming forward. Uh, help me understand, help me understand that because if it's my understanding, it's not the four million because that we've already received and I believe the exact words were and have already made the expenditures well over four million. So what is this, what are these future funds that we're receiving? Is that, is that in the spring more CARES Act or, or I just want to understand what's this future money?
That is, um, it's the same thing as this. It's just round three. HUD, HUD split out their, uh, allocation from the, uh, president into different rounds. We got funding for round one, which is this, and then we also got funding for round three, which is around four hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
Okay.
That, that came out while we were in the process of scoring this. So, um, if we had had more, um, money than, or more requests than that, then we could have, uh, kind of put them all, put it all together. I just didn't want to muddy the waters and, and stop what we were doing because HUD's been on us to get this allocated, this round one funding allocated and submitted to them for approval. So I didn't want to stop everything and extend the process to include extra, we'd have to do another, uh, uh, application process because we didn't get enough request funds to cover that whole amount. Um, so.
Okay. And so to be clear, that round three is purely, uh, has to be dedicated to CBD, CDBG purposes and that's what's in the motion. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions from the council?
Oh, no.
All favor, please raise your hands. And it passes, uh, six to one. Councilmember Hall, all, all against, please raise your hand. Okay. Motion carries six to one. Thanks, Charles. Moving on to item number four. Consideration to approve outdoor photography art on City Hall grounds. Mr. Fisher.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. This item is, uh, the Roswell Arts Fund is presenting a new art exhibit in the city of Roswell and it's called Roswell in Print. The exhibit is a photography type exhibit and they're going to have, um, banners placed around the city on some city property, including the parks. Uh, their request is to put some of these, uh, temporary artworks on City Hall property, which will be along the walkway between City Hall and Canton Street. And, uh, the themes are we are our river, we are our colors and we are forward thinking. Uh, depending on the schedules, if they can get them installed this January, they'll be up from February through, February through April for the exhibit. Uh, if not, they're looking to install in May for an exhibit in June through August. Uh, so this, um, this item. So this, this item is to request, they're requesting a motion to approve to move forward to the mayor and council meeting placing the art exhibits on the City Hall property. We do have our public art manager, Elon Bunchen, from the Roswell Arts Fund is on the line if you have any questions for him regarding this request.
Floor's open. Councilmember Plaramo.
Motion to approve unless there's anything that our, these, these great volunteers want to, want to respond or provide.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Plaramo, second by Councilmember Apata. Any further questions or comments? All in favor, please raise your hands. And it passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to finance, item number five, consideration of adjustments to the occupation tax process. Mr. Lucky.
Good evening, everyone. We are here to continue the conversation about occupation tax, and I have a presentation, so I'll go ahead and share my screen with you. Can everyone see that okay? Okay. As you know, we've had several conversations regarding occupation tax over the past few months. Going back to June ninth, we provided an overview of the tax structure and a comparison just to our surrounding jurisdictions. We did a presentation on September twenty-ninth to discuss profitability tables and the history behind that. And then our last committee meeting on October thirteenth, we discussed some potential changes to the process where we would change kind of the basis of what our occupation tax is based on. So based on the feedback that we've received from mayor and council, we brought this item forward to try and summarize all those items and to get some direction and consideration so that we can move forward. We are kind of getting into a time period where there is a little bit of a time crunch because we are right now preparing for our occupation tax renewal process. So we need some final decisions and direction so that we can prepare for that as we get into December and January. So I'm going to start the presentation. So based on that feedback that we've received, I think it kind of centers around these three components here, and I'll get into these in detail. But number one, you know, determining the basis of our occupation tax. So our recommendation is to switch that to the prior year gross receipts only. Number two, regarding profitability tables, we're recommending that we move to the most recently updated IRS profitability table that reflects all business types. And then number three, you know, considering the changes that will come through the profitability table change, we are recommending a tax credit that would, a one-time tax credit for 2021, and that would help us maintain what has been discussed previously as maintaining a revenue-neutral stance going into 2021. So I'm going to get into these specifically. So the first one we'll talk about is the basis of the occupation tax. So we kind of talked about this at the last committee meeting. But currently, as you know, businesses provide their prior year actual gross receipts as well as an estimate of gross receipts for the coming year. From that, we do a true-up to determine, and we compare their actual gross receipts from the prior year to the estimate they provided, and that could result in a credit or a balance due for the business. And then the occupation tax is based upon the result from that true-up calculation as well as the business's estimate for the upcoming year. That's our current process, and we showed you the application last time. So here on this left-hand side of the application, you can see the business provides their actual gross receipts. That's compared to their estimate from the prior year, and then the true-up calculation is right here. So in this particular example, a credit was owed to the business of sixteen dollars because they, their actual gross receipts were less than their estimate. On the right-hand side, this is where they provide their estimate for the upcoming year and pay accordingly. So what we are proposing is that businesses would provide their prior year actual gross receipts only. There would be no estimates. And then as a result of that, no true-up would be needed. And the occupation tax that they pay would be based on prior year gross receipts only. And as I kind of mentioned at our last meeting, really, this is a effort at trying to make the process a little less complicated, both for our business community as well as for the staff that managed the process. Now, one of the issues, questions that came up at our last meeting was in regards to new businesses and how we would handle that situation. So based on that feedback that we received last time, what we're proposing is that when a new business comes in to obtain their occupation tax certificate, we're proposing that they would provide an estimate for the portion of the year in which they, they will be open. So if they come in and open in July, they'll provide an estimate of their gross receipts from July through December. And then to address the concerns that got brought up at the last meeting, we are proposing that those new businesses only would then provide a true-up in their first year of operations so that, you know, if they came in and said they expected to do a hundred thousand dollars, but actually did eighty thousand dollars, they would receive a credit for that, or if they ended up doing more than what they anticipated, they would pay a little bit higher based on that adjustment. So that's what we're recommending for how to handle new businesses moving forward. So if this is adopted, as again, we showed this last time, essentially, you would have a much less complicated application where essentially you're just providing actual gross receipts for the prior year along with any deductions, the standard exemption, per employee, the number of employees to get you to the occupation tax that would be owed. So just to make sure we're all on the same page, so if you think about the upcoming year, so in January, so if the business renews, they would provide their prior year gross receipts for 2020, but those 2020 gross receipts would be used as the basis for calculating the 2021 occupation tax that they owe. There's another piece of this that I also wanted to mention. We are also recommending that existing businesses, and this would apply to 2021, 2021 renewal only, we're recommending that as part of this transition to where they only report prior year gross receipts. We do recommend that we allow existing businesses to true-up their 2020 estimate. And the main reason for this is that most of these estimates were provided pre-pandemic. And so as a matter of fairness to those businesses, you know, we would recommend that this upcoming year only, would not go any further beyond that, but that we would allow them to true-up their 2020 estimate. And then when they pay their 2021 occupation tax, that would be based solely on the prior year gross receipts. So that kind of summarizes this set of recommendations. And for this particular set, as it says there, mayor and council action is not required for this particular series of recommended changes. Moving on to the profitability tables. As I mentioned, the September twenty-ninth work session reviewed how profitability tables factor in to our occupation tax process. Just to kind of recap that, so we use data from the IRS to calculate a profitability ratio for each NICS classification. And each business is classified or falls into one of those NICS classifications. The mayor and council establish the tax rates for the ranges of profitability. And then that requirement by state law is that any increase in tax rates must coincide with increasing profitability. So as profitability increases, the tax rate can go up. It doesn't have to, but if tax rates go up, it has to coincide with that increase in profitability. Our recommendation is to move to utilizing the most recently updated IRS data. That would be the IRS Statistics of Income, all business types from 2015. And we would recommend utilizing this table permanently moving forward. And as it's updated, we would update our information. Currently, our city ordinance directs the finance department to make this change administratively. And I would, that's the prerogative of the council, mayor and council to determine if you leave that in place or if you want to make a change there. And then finally, you know, as we talked about back at the end of September, by updating the IRS profitability tables to the most recently available data, that will result in most businesses shifting to a higher tax class due to the higher profitability ratios, and that's how the occupation tax process is designed. So those tax rates, the new tax rates that they would be paying for 2021 would be more reflective of the rates that they paid in 2018. Obviously, we've had a lot of discussion about the current times that we're in with the pandemic and the impact that it's had on businesses. And so based on that feedback that we've received from you all and the desire to stay revenue-neutral for this current year, the best way to achieve that is for mayor and council to adopt a resolution that would set, establish a tax credit just for the 2021 occupation tax. And basically, what that tax credit would do is that it would cap the amount that they would pay for 2021 to the final amount that it was paid for 2020. So that does require mayor and council action. It would require the adoption of a resolution. And if we get that direction here this evening, we can bring that forward to you all at the next council meeting. So just to summarize, there's really three areas that we're looking for recommendations. The basis of occupation tax, switching to the prior year gross receipts, updating the profitability tables to the most recently available, and establishing that one-time tax credit for existing businesses that are renewing in 2021. So with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions. Thank you.
Floor's open. What are you looking for, Ryan?
We need a motion to move forward the resolution for the next council meeting.
Councilmember Hall.
I'd like to make a motion move this forward. Ryan, you've done a great job pulling this together, and it's very clear and concise, and I think we know what the path is going forward.
Motion forward by Councilmember Hall, or second? Tyser, seconding?
I'm just, I'm wondering what we're moving forward. I think the only resolution that Ryan needed was a resolution for the credit. Is that true, Ryan?
That's correct. The first two items can be done by staff if you all agree with that, and the third item does require formal council action.
Second.
Motion is made, second. Any further questions or comments from the council? All in favor, please raise your hands. And it is unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to item number six, presentation of fiscal year 2021 first quarter budget report. Mr. Lucky.
So the next item is our first quarter budget reports. And this is for information as of September thirtieth. So I'll walk through this pretty quickly because I know we've talked a lot about this lately, giving you financial updates. So I'll start with our general fund. As you can see on this page, our revenues, our, our actual revenues so far are coming in higher than our projections. On the expenditure side, our expenditures are within our projected amounts. This page gives you a little more detail. So overall, this, this top table tells you about our revenues. Our revenues are about one point one million dollars higher than our projections, and that's mostly due to our sales taxes that are coming in higher than projected. On the expenditure side, we have about, at this point, two point five million dollars in savings. About five hundred and eighty thousand of that in the salaries and benefits, one point one million in operating, eight hundred thousand dollars in transfers and other. In our water and sewer funds, as you can see, our revenues are in line with projections. On the expenditure side, our actuals, actual expenditures are less than projected for this point in the year. Our solid waste fund, our revenues are, again, are in line with projections. Expenditures are a little bit less than what we projected at this point. For our stormwater fund, revenues came in a little bit higher than projected, and our expenditures are within projected amounts. For our recreation participation fund, this is the one we talked about at the last couple of meetings. So this one is a little bit, definitely a little bit tighter. Our revenues are below our projections, but the department is managing their expenditures within those amounts. And again, we are working with them regularly, meaning, and monitoring this on a monthly basis, and we'll be reporting that back to you as we move forward. Hotel motel fund, again, we talked about this at our last meeting. Those revenues are coming in less than projected, and we've recommended some changes associated with that. Our E nine-one-one fund revenues are right on track, and expenditures are less than budgeted at this point in the fiscal year. This page gives you a summary of all of the remaining funds that we didn't highlight. And that concludes our presentation, and I can answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Floor's open. Thanks, Ryan. Moving on to item number seven, presentation of the fiscal year 2021 first quarter budget initiative progress report. Ms. Horrigan.
Thank you, Gary. Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. I'll try and share my screen here. Do you all see the presentation?
It's good.
Okay, thank you. So this is the first quarter budget initiative progress report for fiscal year 2021. And this is a quarterly report whereby we provide an update to mayor and council on the status of initiatives that were approved during the budget process. So as you all know, for fiscal year 2021, we did not have many projects that were funded. And so in this particular report that you are looking at, which is included in your packets, we have some of the FY 2021 initiatives that were approved, and we are also continuing to report on some of the fiscal year 2020 projects that were not completed. And, and in your packets, it says, so you'll have the current status on each of the initiatives that is provided, and you'll have an explanation on what the status is for each of the projects. So I'll just quickly go through each one of the departments. Are you seeing the, yeah, there, that's better. So we'll start with the administration department. So there were a total of seven initiatives that we are reporting on currently. Of the, of the seven, one is completed, four are progressing as planned, and two of them are delayed long-term. And these are the list of projects here on this particular slide. And the two projects that are delayed are the ADA implementation plan and the LED retrofit program here at City Hall. And both of these projects have been delayed because they are frozen due to the situations created by COVID. We'll move on to community development. So there are a total of four initiatives in this department that we are reporting on. Two of them are progressing as planned, and two are delayed. And of the two projects that are delayed, the first one is the historic district property inventory mapping, and then we have the water resource map update. And just to mention here, for the historic district inventory mapping, we are, as you all saw in the presentation last night from Ryan, we are proposing, or we are recommending that a portion of that money be unfrozen. Moving on to public works, so there's a total of ten initiatives here. Two of them have been completed or are substantially complete, and each of them are progressing as planned. And these initiatives have been listed here by each of the respective funds. So we have the solid base fund here, and all of the initiatives in this particular fund are progressing as planned. And then we have the stormwater fund, even here, all of the initiatives, all of the projects are progressing as planned. And then we have the water fund, one project is completed here, and then the rest, the remaining three are progressing as planned again. and then the rest, the remaining three are progressing as planned again. And then in the fleet fund, we have the onsite parts store, the Napa project that has been completed. And then the citywide weekly leasing program is an ongoing program that is progressing as planned. Moving on to the fire department, there are a total of seven initiatives that we are reporting on in this first quarter report. One of them is completed or is substantially complete, three of them are progressing as planned, and three projects are delayed. And this slide shows you the list of projects here. So the delayed projects, you have Fire Station Five, the remodel of Fire Station Five and the fire gate lockers. Now, these two have been delayed due to the impact of COVID. And then we have the turnout gear extractor washing machines, which is also delayed at this time. Moving on to the police department, so they have a total of three initiatives right now that we are reporting on, and all three of them are progressing as planned, and these three projects are listed here on this slide. And then in Wreckin Parks, we have a total of 11 initiatives. One is complete, four of them are progressing as planned, and six of them are delayed. And of the projects that are delayed, most, there are a couple that is because of, again, the impact of COVID. And then there are other programs that have been delayed because they haven't, these are like maintenance programs, the yearly, the annual maintenance programs, and they've been delayed because they either haven't been funded. So they have to postpone those particular projects that they would have typically otherwise performed. And then finally, we have the transportation department, so we have a total of 16 initiatives here. Six of them are progressing as planned, and 10 of these projects have been delayed. And these are the list of projects here for transportation. And then among the delayed projects, the House Road, that is number four, the Woodstock Road, number five. And then we have, yeah, the Riverside Road. So these have been delayed, sorry, the Sun Valley Phase Three, these have been delayed again due to the impact of COVID. And the Riverside Road is delayed because of the public outreach. They've not been able to do that again due to COVID, due to the impact of COVID. And these are some more of the projects from Transportation Department. So that is all we have in this particular report for you for the first quarter. If there are any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Customer Plurmo.
Hi, yes, thank you, Mr. Farmer. Ms. Or, great presentation as always. The transportation delayed items, I didn't notice the HAWK signal on, on Highway Nine connecting City Hall to the historic district. Was that, was that on there?
Yes, sir. So it's not listed as a HAWK project. So the way that is named is right now it's named as Highway Nine connectivity. So you should see that. So that is delayed again because that's, yeah.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments from the council? Thanks, Afree.
Thank you.
Moving on to other items. Consideration of text amendments to Section 4.2 District Components, 5.2 District Components, and 6.2 District Components of Unified Development Code to add default zoning conditions. Customer Plurmo.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Farmer. So this item, if you remember, I brought this forward probably about two months ago or so. And it was for discussion, letting you know that I certainly wanted to bring this forward for a vote. It's one that I think is important, but wanted to give chance to everybody for, for this committee to review as well as for the public. And if you do remember, we got a great detailed email about this October 23rd, which actually included some quotes of, of Alpharetta's process and, and their rules to having this. But ultimately, what this is, is when you have a mixed-use project and involves separate buildings, that if, if what's, if what's shown to the, to the council and really to the public on what they're requesting, it's going to typically, if it's mixed-use and it's going to include residential and commercial or, and/or retail, then basically that's, that's what's, that's what's shown to the council, that's what's shown to the public, that's what's approved. And then what's possible in Roswell is they build the residential. So for example, they build the apartment building, but they never, they never build the walkable, you know, commercial slash retail that was promised as a part of it as well. And that's a major issue for two reasons. That's a major issue because frankly, it's, it's quite likely you have some Roswell residents that are perhaps wanting that commercial and retail and perhaps supporting the project, expecting that, and that never, that never happens. In which case, in which case really those, those Roswell residents, those existing Roswell residents were misled. And then also for just really walkability and pedestrian connectivity, et cetera, that you have individuals moving in to those apartment buildings, looking for that walkability, and then it never comes. So, so those future residents don't benefit as, as well. And so, so this is, this is an issue that has occurred in Roswell, and we frankly need to do something about it. And, and what I've proposed is a way to do something about it. And, and as I mentioned in that first committee meeting that was about two months ago, I said if anybody else had a better idea that, that certainly had teeth and gave us full confidence that if we're approving mixed-use, that it's actually going to be mixed-use, then I'm, I'm totally open to it. You know, I, I certainly want to find compromise, I certainly want to find consensus. That being said, what I'm not willing to do is either not pass a change because again, I strongly feel this is better for Roswell development, this is better for Roswell residents. And it's important to me that we pass something that has teeth. So the last thing I want to do is pass something that doesn't really ensure it and doesn't give teeth. It just gives the appearance of, of teeth, and that, and that's something that of course is, is not, is not helpful. What, what I want to mention as, as well with this is it's, it's interesting because I actually even see it, and this is, and this is not the way it's written in our, our code, but I'd even argue it's a site plan change in the sense that you have a mixed-use request. They, they, they submit something that has residential and has commercial retail. They don't end up building the commercial retail, they just end up building the residential. As far as I'm concerned, that's a site plan change. That's not what was approved, that's not what was committed. And we need to address that. Again, I feel my proposal here of not having the residential COs available until that commercial slash retail is built is a way to solve it. Something we've seen be successful in Alpharetta. It's something we've seen on at least one, maybe two projects that, that, that have this council supported, has included some type of conditions there. But this is something that should be the default, this is something that should be standard. And again, an example of where we've seen this is Highway Nine. So on Highway Nine at Sun Valley, it was a proposal for, for apartments as well as commercial, really just walkable retail right there, and that's, that's not was built. And, and again, we need to ensure that's, that should not be happening, and that should not, and, and the way to do that is with my proposal that I, that I have here. So with that, I'd love to open it up to, to discussion.
Customer Tizer.
Thank you, Gary. Councilmember Plurmo, and for the rest of you, I spent about an hour with Councilmember Plurmo a few weeks back discussing this and looking at some potential possibilities. I think all of us would like to see projects finished. In this case, leaving it the way it is, it turns out to be poorly thought out and creates some significant problems. It is not true that Alpharetta brings, requires this to be the case. What is true is they've done it once, maybe twice as conditions. But I have heard from their director of community, of community development that they, they write two separate building permits for this type of situation. Now, this has happened, to my knowledge, once in the entire history of Roswell. Frankly, we were part of the cause of it when we made the right decision to not bring Sun Valley Three through. That lost that development's anchor tenant, a grocery store, because residents could no longer get there directly, and the company decided to pull out. So, so I want to be careful here that we don't create a situation where people can't build things. Because had this been in place with, with the property that Councilmember Plurmo is talking about today, they would have built everything, council would have changed something, and what we would have is a bunch of empty apartments. And so I, I'm going to give you a couple of things that I have found out. There are a couple of cities that have a percentage completion model where it says that instead of having to complete all of the construction of the commercial, it says you can have 40% of your residential COs until you have created a situation where you can build your commercial. And in that way, you know, they can start to create the cash flow that, that each of them need. And so that would be one concept that we found. And I think the other important thing here would be that we don't, as a council, box ourselves into a corner, that we don't create a ordinance that we ourselves, because of a given situation, can't override at a given, at a given time. So that would be one thing that I would request that we specifically state that council in this case can make that change. So those would be the things that I would, I would talk about. But, but, but just the way this is, I would tell you from talking to people who actually create these kinds of things, the way this one is written right now would be a death knell to the kinds of developments, the kinds of walkable developments that we'd like to see.
Customer Plurmo.
Thank you, Mr. Farmer. So I absolutely enjoyed the, the discussion with, with Councilman Tizer, and enjoy the discussion right now. I think this is, this is why it's so important to have these, these public discussions. Couple of clarifications I'd like to give is that with Alpharetta's rules, they actually have them beginning January 1st, 2022. And so that, and that, there's, there's some details around that in, in everyone's email from October 23rd from a, from a resident, asking that we, that we support this, this change. With that, with that as well, what I, what I strongly believe is that if there was the COs tied to a development, then that development would be that much more motivated to ensure they are building the commercial, which, which, which is lower profitability than the, than the residential. But I believe there'd be that, that advantage. But I think what's, what's more important around, around this is, is just really making sure that we hit that goal. Because 40% COs is something that I think is too high, and it's, it's not having enough, enough teeth and assurance. I, I am open to supporting a percentage, but I definitely do not feel it, it should be as high as 40%. That's one thing I want to add. But actually, I think more importantly is an area where Councilman Tizer and I agree. Is that what was key and what I discussed when either, with either Mr. Hulsey or Mr. Davidson or both, was I wanted to make sure there was a way that council could really just update this, ignore it, whatever, whatever it might be for their zoning decision. Because my whole goal here is not to say that every possible future development should have this requirement. My goal here is to say that is the default. So when there is a development that is really needing a great need or has some true legitimate reason that council deems appropriate to, to take away that requirement or increase the percentage. Maybe make it so that COs aren't tied at all. Maybe they make it through 40%, 60%, 80%. What I want to do is I want to give council that leverage, but I want to ensure the default is saying that unless council says otherwise at that conditional use hearing, then they're required to, to actually build the commercial slash retail before they get those COs.
Customer Espada.
Thank you. So, well, I believe that is a, is a great initiative for several reasons. One, that stay, you know, true to the project, so it's not a beta switch here situation. That some kind of developers may come here asking for any excuse not to do the less profitable portion of the project, even if he's like, you know, 300 yards cut through, didn't happen on the, on the commercial corridor. As a great excuse not to do the less profitable part of the project. So, and number two is we need to look after those new either tenant or homeowners if he's a condo. There's many cases that those beautiful brochures show when they want to move in or, or buy a unit, how beautiful will be this with little boutique restaurant, boutique nail salon, and blah, blah, blah. And then this never happened, and they never happened. And then all these people who move in in good faith, they get the short stick. So we need to look forward for that, not only for the best interest and profit of the developer, and also we need to look for these people who is going to move in, either renters or people buying a condo. So nobody pay attention to that, and they are the one who get the short stick. And we need to look after that because then this is what are going to give value to the project, and it's going to be, make value to all the areas surrounding this possible development. So, so I think it's a great initiative. And also we'll, we'll filtrate, I believe that we'll filtrate good developers from bad developers. Good developers who can seriously, with experience and the deep pocket, to do a project that is a mixed-use, a true mixed-use versus those others that they just want to take the opportunity, make it back and run away. So that will be a filter because if they are serious about it, they understand, and they will move forward. My require maybe looking for them in the region, not only in Roswell, but beyond Roswell. But this would be definitely a filter for serious developers of mixed-use projects. So I think that this set a, a high bar for everything and it take care and protect the consumers, which are the people who is moving in into this project with these beautiful brochures, to make sure that this, what they see on the brochure is what they're going to get as a renter, who is a homeowner of a condo.
Customer Hall.
Thank you, Gary. Yes, I also, I, I echo what Councilmembers Apata said. Some of my comments are basically related. There are developers that are, there are commercial developers that basically develop commercial properties, and they accent with retail, with residential. There's developers that are masquerading as mixed-use developers, and, and this is what, this is what we want to deter. We want to drive the kind of development we want to see. We've been talking about, we need more commercial, we need to build that base. We want to attract those type of developers. And if they want to accent with residential, that's terrific. But that's the precedent, or that's the message that we need to send. We need to reach out beyond our little circles of Roswell and our little area of developers. And there are these developers, I work with them across the country, they're out there, and they're looking for areas to invest their money. So for this reason, I, I support this, and I support it without percentages.
Customer Tizer.
Got to get the right spot there. Thank you. Whether there's percentages or not percentages, I heard Councilmember Plurmo say something that piqued my curiosity. Where what, what, what you said is not what's written here in this provision. I think what you said is you want to make sure that council sets a percentage for each project based on the, the conditions of, of that project, or based on what that project is, and it might change on any given project. And so that's of interest to me to hear. But what isn't of interest is this very black or white, just don't, you can't, you can't do it. And council has no way to, to fix, to fix that for situations that are different, which you said I think you would like to have. So can't support it as it's written, but I think there are ways that we could get to something that would bring in the kind of developers that Councilmember Hall talks about. But also keep, keep, keep our active council in charge rather than tying everybody's hands so that when a situation comes in, it's just not possible to do.
Customer Hulsey.
Yes, thank you, and thanks for the great conversation. I think, you know, we can all agree that we want some quality mixed-use developments that have all components for that have all components for live, work and play communities. And I I also dug a little, but I do think that that the key is to look at each property individually and come up with what that percentage and what those conditions might be. I took a deeper look into the example that was provided and that that you referenced and Councilmember Palermo. And I I took a a look at the probably a ten-page report on that project and it was about a sixty-three acre project. And actually, out of that, the requirement for the CO to be issued was actually only twenty percent of the total six hundred and thirty thousand square feet of office space. It wasn't in its entirety, as as I believe you, as you believe you quoted. So to that end, I also reached out to Alpharetta and what they said again, just is that they look at these projects on a case by case basis, based on what the market and the jobs and the people and the potential is. So I would suggest that we start taking a much closer look at projects, at developments that come in and put the conditions on them that we want and give them some flexibility and opportunities to work with the developers.
Councilmember Judy.
Thank you, Gary. So I think taking all disagreement out of this, I think from every person I've heard this evening, we all agree that we want to protect resident, a mixed use project with the residential being built without the commercial portion of it. So let's just take that off the table. We all agree there. Now, I've done some research to talk to many people in the past few weeks. And as written, I've been told by multiple people that they wouldn't even come look at Roswell. And these people haven't even done done developments in Roswell with that as written. So that turns off a group of maybe would be good developers who are doing good projects in other cities and other states. And these folks were in other states. So what I I would like to do is figure out what is that percentage? I I would support a percentage approach. And also, what is that that way we can give council discretion where it doesn't turn off, it is the default, it's what we do, but what does not turn off us getting people to come look at our community for good projects? And and I think that's a delicate balance on the way this is written. So as we go through this process, I I think we've had some good open conversation this evening. I don't want to leave this conversation tonight in a hard fast, this is what we're going to do. But I because I really think we could come to an agreement here because we do all agree. Not one person here disagrees. So let's let's figure it out. I I challenge us all to figure it out and come up with what that is because I think we can do what's right for Roswell while not turning off potential people that are doing amazing developments in cities just like ours and other states and in our state.
Councilmember Pal.
So I I think I am I am hearing, in my opinion, some some opportunity for for agreement. And I just want to kind of clarify that because I think really that the big discussion is not whether or not we want mixed use projects to actually be built as mixed use. We all want that. The question ends up being, are we willing to do anything in support of that? Are we willing to actually support that? Or is the preference to keep things the same and not do anything in support of that one? And I and I think I'm hearing that that everybody does want to do something about it. And and that's why I I think it is important that we're moving this forward. And and again, as everybody's aware, this is this is a long process. This is this is a text amendment, which means today is the committee, it's the third time we've brought it to committee. And the next the next step would be council where it's voted or denied for initiation where and then from initiation, it goes to planning commission where we get their recommendations. From planning commission, it comes back to council for a first reading and then it comes back for a second reading. So this is a this is a long process on an important initiative. One thing I want to clarify is regarding the intent. So this is, so my intent was a hundred percent that any council can absolutely override the default. And the way they could do that is the the rezoning request comes in or the conditional use request comes in, whatever that whatever that zoning application is. And either the applicant can even just ask in any way, just as they as as they do in at other times for certain concessions or things like that, they can absolutely just verbally be requesting. But more importantly, council has the ability to to just really be be granting it as well. So that would be a condition. So basically, the default, if no condition is mentioned regarding it, then the default is they need to they need to build the commercial slash mix, the the commercial slash retail before the the COs are granted. As I mentioned, I am in support of going to a percentage as as high as ten or maybe even twenty percent. I prefer it at zero, but I certainly could go ten or twenty percent. But in when I spoke with Ms. Diaboll and when I spoke with either Mr. Davidson or Mr. Hulsey, their concern at first was, the way I had phrased it, was they were concerned that I was setting it up where they have to ask for an official variance. And that was not my goal. I did not want to add any paperwork or anything like that. It was just I wanted to make sure that that council had the authority to say, even though our default is you don't get any COs until the commercial slash retail is built, instead we are going to say that you get fifty percent, eighty percent. You could just say you get a hundred percent, you don't, you're not required to do. It could be, it could be up to the council at that time. When I'm, my whole goal here is creating the default. And so I know Mr. Councilman Tizer has a a question or comment, but I also would love to hear from his diable too on that discussion we had.
Jackie, did you want to jump in or do you want to stand by?
I'll stand by for the moment.
Councilmember Tizer.
Thank you, Ms. Diaboll. I hear what you're saying, Councilmember Palermo, and I do believe that after our discussion, I believe I I agree with what you're, I understand your intent. Before, I would feel comfortable moving something like this forward. I think it should have the wording of what you've said. It does not say here, this is the default. It doesn't say that, you know, council can, you know, can it can can override. And there's no process that indicates that. And so if we move this forward for initiation, we haven't given that that direction to planning commission or any other body that's going to review this. And I think that's that's that's, I think, the the problem with this would be moving forward and it would show that what council's intent would be, would be that this is just a clear black and white issue. And that that's what's troubling for me. But I would, you know, I just want to make sure it's clear that I support a process that makes sure that 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 the whole project's built. I just want to make sure that we create a process that that is clear, that's understandable, and that brings in the kind of investment that Councilmember Hall talked about.
Councilmember Judy.
To that point, Councilman Tizer, I I a hundred percent agree. I think to support this tonight, move it forward, we need to include that language. I also want to make sure this is an important enough item that it's a it's a we thing and it's all of us. And this is a something that we move forward together and want to work with and get enacted here, you know, as quickly as possible. But, you know, that's going to take some work, it's going to take some collaboration and it's going to take some give and take. And, you know, I think we do do do, I can't speak here, do need to do some research about and talk to some people that we we need to look at some projects that have been done outside of the state or in the in the state or around and ask that person, if you were going to go and do this project that we like and we put a twenty percent completion rate on this, would you be able to finance that and do that? So we can come up with that number, that percentage, and and we could show examples of what that is rather than coming up with a number out of off the top of our head. And I challenge us all to do that for next time. But to move this forward tonight, I hope we can add that language and in the meantime, work on the different elements.
Councilmember Pal.
Excellent. So I think that's a very healthy discussion. And I don't want to rush a motion, but a motion that I would want to make today would be to move this to for initiation, but to move it with staff updating it to include the intent that I mentioned, both which was the intent I had discussed with Ms. Diaboll and Mr. Davidson and or Mr. Hulsey, as well as the exact same intent I shared with you this evening, that I want to make sure absolutely anytime there's a zoning hearing, this can easily be a condition that's that's added. And it's just this is the default if there's no condition added by council.
Is there a second? Second, let Councilmember Hall. Can you repeat that motion one more time, Councilmember Pal?
Motion to move this to initiation at the next regularly scheduled council meeting and for staff to work on updating the language to include the the detail that this is the default, but council has the authority in a council meeting, in a in a zoning hearing to update it, to add a condition that would override this in any way, whether it's eliminate or update.
Thank you. You have motion on the floor in a second. Any further questions or comments? Jackie, go ahead.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Oh, thank you. You said the next council meeting, do you mean November thirtieth or do you mean December fourteenth?
With the next regularly scheduled COMDAV council meeting.
That would work for us so that we could get the language correct before we bring it to initiation. Thank you.
No problem.
Clarification. Mike, I know in this, the way that it's written, it says all commercial office must be built. And I believe I heard you say something, you mentioned a percentage. So I was curious if you're moving it forward with that percentage or if that's a blank something that will have COMDAV help us fill in or or what your intention is.
So my my intention is to to not have a percentage. I think that's I think that's a discussion that I'd like to have and and maybe at initiation, we even have planning commission look at it as well. But again, my my preference is we move it as is because in reality, what I want the default to be is I want the default to be, it's they need to build, they need to build the hundred, it's a hundred percent. So it's, you know, zero percent, hundred percent. That being said, the whole reason for this default is to power cap, empower council. So council sees a project that is going to be, you know, great for the the tax base, great for the community, you know, just just something that's to be approved. And they then decide, instead of it being, you know, zero or a hundred percent, it's it's twenty, forty, sixty, eighty, you know, this is just completely removed. That's that's what I'm doing. I'm empowering, you know, this council and future councils during that zoning deal or zone, I'm sorry, zoning hearing.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Okay, we have motion on the floor in a second. Any further questions from the council? All in favor, please raise your hands. And motion passes six to one. I'm sorry, and where do you oppose, raise your hand. Councilmember Tizer opposes, passes six to one. Thank you. We'll be on to the last item. Consideration of a text amendment to section nine point six point five, vehicle service and repair, letter B, car wash of the Unified Development Code. Councilmember Zapata.
So this is much simple, very simple. It's just the idea here is to get a nice look and feel of the car wash so you don't drive by or walk by through vacuums and rolling brushes facing the road. And so, you know, based on what we have today for the public storage is that they have to look like a building, like a office building or like some sort of building, not like a like a public storage. So it's the same concept apply here for the, I'm proposing to apply here for the car wash. So it's going to improve the aesthetics, it's going to improve the look and feel of a car wash. And this is what I'm looking, I mean, I'm trying to beautify the city. And I think car washes as they are today, they're not beautifying the city, having all these vacuums right there in front of everybody. I don't think it is a good taste and aesthetic. So it's very simple. So you can cover, if you have window, you can cover them so you don't see the brushes with the foam inside on top of the car. And if you have vacuums put either on the back of the building or covered with ni- nice evergreen landscaping. So the intention is to beautify the future car washes in the city. So very simple.
Councilmember Pal.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. I support this initiative. You know, Roswell's becoming more and more walkable. And and I I think I think having the right looking, you know, facilities helps with that as well as just wanting to really make sure that we're we're beautifying our our community with new things that are being being built. The one question I have from Ms. Diaboll is if I support this, any any place where any zoning that car wash is conditional, it stays conditional, this does not impact whether it's conditional, permitted or limited, is that accurate?
That's correct. This is only adding use standards that a car wash would be have, be required to follow.
Okay. In that case, in that case, I support this initiative and appreciate you, Councilman Zapata, doing this this research.
Councilmember Hulsey.
Yes, thank you. And I, you know, I can appreciate the intent behind this, I certainly can. But I guess my concern is that it's a little bit of a slippery slope and I think what one person finds displeasing might be a ten-year-old boy's entertainment for a couple hours. So, you know, while their parents are having dinner or something. So I think it's a very slippery slope. I also think that, you know, there are some car washes in town where you have peoples who are working outside, who that is their job, where they're, you know, maybe vacuuming or working on a car. So I don't want it to slip into something like that where we're, you know, forcing those folks to work behind the building or something like that. And then what if we decide we don't want to watch people eating in restaurants or we don't want to see the elevator in a in a in a dry cleaner? Again, I appreciate the concern, but I'm just afraid it's kind of a slippery slope here, so.
Councilmember Judy.
So this is, this would be citywide in all in all zoning, what that's car washes are allowed?
Yes, that's correct.
And what I'm, what I'm worried about here is is where, you know, any equipment cannot be viewed from a public street. So that basically doesn't allow you to have a car wash in some places because there's streets on on all sides of some car washes. There's, you know, how how there's, you've, I mean, my one at the corner right in front of the hospital, I don't know where you would put any of this. And that's a pretty nice car wash. I I I just think that in certain areas where that's the reason of zoning, you allow car washes in certain areas, I could see putting up screening around the equipment. But the letter E, which says, any equipment located outside must located to the side or rear of building so that cannot be viewed from a public street, I think that's very broad. So I am trying to figure out how you would go about that. And then, you know, the added cost to a car wash come in the city, car washes are necessary. People, people use car washes every day. So I I want to make sure if we do something like this, I understand the intent of wanting things to look well. I'm a hundred percent for that. I just want to make sure we're not, we're thinking through this one hundred percent.
Councilmember Pal.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. So Councilman Judy, you had some interesting points. So if I'm hearing correctly, sounds to me like you don't have concern for D, that you potentially support D. And if anything with E, it sounds to me like you'd prefer, instead of it being from a public street, instead it's something along the line, instead of period, it's or the equipment shall be screened with landscaping as as approved by either the HPC or the DRB. Because if I'm understanding correctly, you you don't have a, you don't, you don't have an issue with the equipment being screened. Your only issue is just public street. But then again, if you're screening it, there's not that view. So I'm just just wondering if there's some common ground there.
Again, I I think what it, what is Again, I, I think what, what is screening, what, what does that mean? Because, you know, most, you say landscaping. So you've got, how would you know there's a car wash there if you've got landscaping high enough not to be able to see the car wash beside, as a sign outside? You know, and then, so I, I, if you screen the equipment appropriately, I don't know if that's done with a fence because it's mostly concrete. So are you going to plant plants in the concrete? I don't know. I'm, I'm having issues with the screening portion of this. I think it's got to be really tough.
Counselor Hulsey.
Yeah, yeah. Just a question. Don't these already go through design review board anyway as part of the, the process?
Yes, that's correct.
Counselor Zappata.
Yeah, this will add a guideline for the design review board. You know, we are council, so we can give guidelines to all the board and commissions. So, and then if anybody wants to screen people eating outside, feel free to bring the, the initiative. It's not my initiative, but someone else can, and I'm willing to understand and, and look at that. So, but it's not today. We're not talking about restaurants today. We're talking about car washes. And, you know, with the look and feel of existing car washes. And there's also something called signs that I'm not against signs. And this regulated in the city of Roswell signs that they will say what kind of business it is, the name of the business, the brand, the color of the brands, et cetera. So this is how you identify businesses when you are driving by or walking by, not only Roswell, but all over the world, I would say. So it's just a matter if, if you believe that car washes can be more aesthetics and blended, or just sticking out in your face, the vacuums and the brushes with soap rolling over the car. So, I mean, I understand, you know, we all have different aesthetics perception, and we all believe that the city should look a certain way. We all believe that, you know, sometime the, that is more important, the dollar than the look and feel. So I, I understand that. So I, I get it. I, I mean, it's clear. So, but, you know, I don't want to be, you know, controversial with this and giving options or, or motive to people to be contradicted and trying to find any little things to not make it happen. So that is fine, you know, if, if you don't believe that we could beautify car washes in the city. I see more and more coming in. It's great. People keep the car very nice and clean and shiny. I love it. But also, you know, there's room for improvement. If you don't believe that, I get it. I respect the opinion. And, and we see, you know, how it goes.
Counselor Judy. So, Councilman Zapata, I, and I believe Councilman Hulsey was trying to talk through this with you to come to some kind of agreement. And you just condescend us for, I know there's signs. She knows, she was given an example about eating. And at the end of the day, I would love to support making things look better. But I'm not going to support somebody who brings something that wants to belittle other council members regarding trying to come to a agreement here. So I appreciate that, but I appreciate respect next time.
We also, we have, you know, design review board, and it would have to go through the council process for approval since I believe it's a conditional use everywhere. So, you know, we as council already have means in place to put some parameters around the aesthetics and screening of the car wash.
Counselor Palermo. Thank you, Ms. Palmer. So I'm going to look at this with the lens of just purely, do I feel there's a text amendment that, that improves Roswell for future development? Yes or no? And that's going to be my, my pure view. I'd say the issue, the DRB review today, there's no requirements for this. And so, so the DRB therefore is not helping from, from these beautification standpoints. They do do some beautification aspects, but not from this standpoint. And then, so I think, I think there's a good point that now there's conditional uses. So there's the opportunity for council to weigh in. But what I want to see is really just transparency to developers. So they know ahead of time what to expect. I wouldn't want them to spend all this money on these plans and they do what's required. They come in and say, oh, no, you didn't, you didn't do this, you didn't do that. And then it adds just time and cost to their process. So if we do agree there's a way to beautify, let's, let's put it in here. But I actually, I propose something that Councilman Zapata might not support, but I'm going to, I'm going to share what I, what I'm able to support tonight, which is I'd like to see this move forward with D. And then I'd like to see this move forward with E, something where it's mentioning when possible or something along those lines. And so that there's not the hard and fast requirement on E, but instead the DRB and developers know that this is what, what's, what's preferred when possible. And, and I'd take it one step further, hoping to gain Councilman Zapata's support on this is if, if any elected official or if staff were able to provide any examples of car washes that, that do really illustrate what E is and a good way to do E, then I think this council at initiation or through the planning commission or elsewhere could end up making E stricter as it is today. But until I see pictures and examples, I think that's where I prefer E not having the teeth and instead being more the suggestion. Counselor Tizer.
Thank you, Gary. I came in here this evening looking at this not being in favor as I've thought through it. I don't really have an issue with C or D. Councilman Palermo just changed the wording in E to when possible, any equipment located outside should be located on the side of the building so that the equipment can have a good view of public street and the equipment shall be screened landscaped as approved. That's one option. Another option that I would put forward is, is if letter E was just the second sentence, I think that might get you there also. In other words, I would trust my two boards to make a decision. So those would be two potential options. I kind of like, potentially like Councilmember Palermo's version a little better.
Counselor Judy.
So that's how this works. I appreciate you two talking through that, not making fun of any other council members for their thoughts and coming to an agreement. I could support that as well.
Counselor Zappata.
Thank you for all the constructive comments and adding up and improving. I'm excited. And so, yeah, I would like then to move forward this with the suggestion on letter E that Councilmember Palermo made. I don't know if you, Jackie, were able to take note of his suggesting language. If not, maybe Councilmember Palermo can repeat this. But I think it's a great idea. I'm totally supporting this additions and improvement to this initiative.
I can listen to the meeting, or listen to the portion again Thursday and get the wording from what Councilmember Palermo said. Thank you.
Thank you. So I would like then, if we are ready to make, okay.
Go ahead, Counselor Zappata. Do you want to make a motion?
Sorry, I want to deal my, my time to Councilmember Tizer.
Counselor Tizer.
Thank you, Councilmember Zapata. I just want to make it clear, Jackie, so you don't have to listen to the tape. What I would like to see on E per Councilmember Palermo's comments was the following, before the word any, the words where possible, after the word outside, the word must changed to should be located. And that, that would make it easier for you if we tell you exactly what we'd like to see. I think you're good with that, Councilmember Zapata. Then I'm fine with you making your motion.
Great. Yes. That is, thank you for saving some time here and I appreciate it. So yes, I make the motion to move forward with these recommendations to add it up and be presented then. Motion to move forward.
I'll, I'll second it with a caveat. If I do end up seeing examples that, that are examples that we want to follow and something we feel could or should make E stricter, then that's what I'll end up supporting. But tonight, what was described, that motion is, is all I can support and something I proudly support. So I, I second that.
Well, thank you.
We have a motion on the floor in a second. Any further questions or comments from the council? All in favor, please raise your hands. And the motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And we are adjourned. Y'all have a good night.